Resolution one four eight, I'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Attendees Larry Malchuk, Gary Bertel, Gary Bertel will join us later. Clint Jensen, Ken Reader, Leanne Huntman, absent with notice, Gail Wagner, Trevor Woke, Colin Nizer, absent with notice, and Ken Mally will join us later also. I need a mover and a second for the resolution, Gary, seconded by. Ken, all in favor, carried. Resolution one four nine, approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, I'll read the resolution, be it resolved at the meeting, agenda for the regular council meeting of April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented. Mover and a second there. Ken, seconded by. Clint, all in favor, carried. Number three, approval of previous minutes. Regular council meeting of April first. Anyone have any questions on the recordings? None, I'll read the resolution one five zero, be it resolved that the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of council on April first, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented. Mover and a second there. Gary, seconded by. Gail, all in favor, carried. Next on the agenda, number four, delegations. Don Vanting.
So I received a complaint from the bylaw officer and it was, it states, it was regarding my dog's barking. The bylaw states that no person shall permit any animal to bark, howl, or make a noise that could disturb the peace and enjoyment of people in the surrounding area. The letter stated that I am directed to control the barking of my dogs as to comply with the bylaw. What does this even mean? Now, what constitutes a compliance of the bylaw? There are no time parameters, no decibel levels, or any other guidelines of any sort that I'm supposed to follow, it's impossible to comply. It's totally open to the interpretation and discretion of the neighbors as to how much barking is disturbing to them. Non-dog owners will find any barking to be an annoyance, whereas others who have have or had dogs probably won't even hear it as the noise is filtered out. I live alone and next door to people that are known to police, and it's no secret, known to be thieves. I have not had any issues from next door, and I believe the main reason is because of my dogs. These tenants are out and about at all hours of the night and day, on the back steps, back and forth into their garage, driving around on their cars all night. All kinds of people are walking to and from the residence at all times of the day. My dogs don't bark whenever anyone, my dogs do bark whenever anyone walks up the back lane. My dogs do bark when someone leaves the house next door and walks past. The other day, a man was walking up to the vacant trailer next door, the dogs alerted. I stepped outside to find a neighbor walking into the carport of the vacant trailer. A single voice command from me stopped the dogs from barking. Sorry, trying to follow what I got here. The neighbor explained his intention was to take the recycle bin from the vacant trailer next door to catch water for a water leak. My dogs bark to alert me there was someone or something. My dogs don't bark at the wind, they don't bark at birds or for fun, they bark to alert. That same day, an entire family rode past on their bicycles, my dogs didn't even make a single sound. I've done my due diligence, I purchased my dog's license, I have a doghouse, I do not after the dogs. They are not and have never been at large. I put up a fence, I went so far as to plant vines on the fence for more privacy, I've posted signs front and back. I bring my dogs in at night against their will, so they don't bark at night, but with the neighbors next door, I can't leave them out. Through the winter, they were barely even outside, and I received this complaint dated March the twenty-seventh. The dogs hadn't even been left outside for the day at that point. My dogs are not dangerous or aggressive, they're security, they bark to alert. The complainant, whoever it was, has not taken any opportunity to speak to me regarding the issue. The complainant doesn't understand that my dogs aren't barking just to annoy them, they're barking to alert me. The complainants can't see the backyard next door, they can't see the people walking up and down the back lane. Again, I've done my due diligence, if the complainant wants my dogs to bark less, then I believe that the town or the R M needs to take some responsibility and clean up the problem next door. That's the biggest part of the problem, not my dogs. I'm a single lady, I live alone, the dogs are my security. I've taken all the steps I can to ensure my safety, I have no control over what goes on next door. My dogs will continue to alert as long as the problem exists next, exists next door. That's an issue for the town, the R M, or the police to address. Again, I believe I've done my due diligence, but if there is something that I could do, there needs to be some sort of guidelines to follow for the bylaw. It's ridiculous to leave the bylaw to the discretion of the neighbors, I've got no control over that. So I don't know what I'm supposed to do with this complaint. There's nothing I can do to control it, so where do I go from here?
I'll just interject, counsel, we have a second reading of Dog and Cat Control Bylaw that's basically gone through two readings, but it's not yet been approved. So we're basically in progress in updating bylaw, but currently that in development bylaw is not in effect, we still have the old bylaw.
So you spent twenty dollars sending me a registered letter regarding a bylaw that's, that's not even...
Well, the current bylaw's in force, so, and the, and the letter is by registered mail as required, so that, that process...
So how do I comply with the bylaw that's at the discretion of the neighbor, or the complainant, sorry? I've spoken to four of my neighbors, and none of them have any complaints. So where do I stand with this registered letter, why do I, what's the point of it?
Do, any?
Anybody?
Questions from?
Well, yes, from hearing what you said, it sounds like it's more of a neighborly, yeah, issue there, that's the problem, to me.
But I mean, like I said, they're there for my security, they go in at night, so it's not to disturb the neighbors because of what's going on next door, but that's when most of the problems are happening. So is there not anything that the town, the R M, or anybody can do about that, I mean?
What does the current bylaw say as far as barking dogs?
Uh, the letter and the page of the bylaw referring to letter is, is in your package.
No, the bylaw actually states, no person shall permit any animal to bark, howl, or make a noise that could disturb the peace and enjoyment of the people in the surrounding area. So why did I get the letter?
So when it comes in, it's a, is it a written complaint, Trevor, is that how it is here, or I guess even in this case?
In this case, I'd have to refer to our animal control officer.
Okay.
But it is, uh, like the complaint comes in, but we can't show the name of the complaintant.
No, I realize that. So like, I'm just wondering, is it like, uh, I'm just even thinking, if it's a phone complaint, number one, how legit is that? Like, anybody could pick up a phone and say, Dawn, Dawn's dog is barking. So I'm just wondering, is, was it a, can you tell if it was written?
And two phone calls.
And phone calls?
Two phone calls.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay, that's okay.
Is the timeline important? Like, she moved here over a year ago. The only thing that, oh, sorry, can I speak?
No, not good. Delegation has the floor for fifteen minutes, so.
I guess maybe for me to get a, I don't know exactly, on Third Avenue...
I live right next door to Kublix.
Oh, okay, well, thanks, you answered my question.
Right.
Okay, 'cause I was just wondering proximity to who, and, and, yeah, okay. Well, that tells me a lot, really, Trevor.
Well, nobody else can see what goes up and down the back lane, they're out there, you know, I mean, at three o'clock in the morning, I can hear them hammering and sawing and doing whatever they're doing in the garage next door, you know? And I mean, like I said, I'm doing my due diligence, the dogs come in at night, because otherwise, I know they're gonna bark at night, because there's always something going on over there.
Yeah, I hear you.
I mean, you want me to comply with a bylaw that's, it's, like I said, it's up to the discretion of the neighbor, what they find to be annoying, and like, I've spoken to four of the other neighbors. I've actually even spoken to Kublix. You know? Nobody says, and they all say, well, yeah, you know, they bark, but they bark when somebody walks by. That's what they're supposed to do. You know, if you live in town and people have dogs, that's what they do. I...
Yeah. I guess my thing would be more if, uh, the hours of ten or maybe eleven at night, if the dog was barking constantly, or something like that.
Never.
That could be a violation, my, my, but...
But see, the bylaw doesn't say that.
Yeah.
Were the dogs possibly barking when the animal control officer investigated?
Absolutely, if somebody's sitting outside my house in their vehicle, my dogs are gonna alert.
Or if I was standing on the sidewalk on the other side of the street?
Possibly.
Should they be barking at somebody like that, people walking down the other side of the street?
Anybody on the front street. That's what they're there for. I mean, unless the, like I said, there's nothing to comply with, I'm spinning my wheels.
Yeah, my dog will bark at anybody on the street, doesn't matter which direction you're going.
No, and as soon as they pass by, they quit. But, like I said, sorry, are you, are you Dale?
I'm Dale, yeah.
Oh, okay.
What kind of dogs are they, Dawn, right here?
They're border colies.
Border colies, okay.
Yeah, they're very well behaved, I get compliments all the time on how well behaved they are.
And they're in a fence, it's not that they can get out.
Never. Nope, they have never been at large.
So if I understand, Dale, it's section seven one B specifically that we're looking at, right?
Seven B, yeah.
Yeah. Which is, I'll just read it, because we're doing audio recording. Permit, section seven one B, as in bottom. Permit, no person shall permit any animal to bark, howl, or make a noise that could disturb the peace and enjoyment of people in the surrounding area, that's as per the bylaw.
My letter actually was, did state that the bylaw officer was at the wrong address, but I overlooked that part. Said they were at three forty-nine Third Avenue, which is not where I live.
Does anyone have any other further questions for the delegation?
Well, I think I, you know, learned a lot, I guess, by listening years to your neighborhood and possibly some of the issues beside you and potential of causing the dogs to bark when they do.
Yeah. And like I said, they're for myself, they're my security, and they alert, they don't, like I said, they don't bark continuously or at, you know, once they walk by or, you know, the dogs quit.
How is, I guess, the noise level of your neighbors bothering you? Just, just kinda off topic here, but I'm gonna ask it anyway.
Over at the Kublix?
Yes.
It's quite high, but what am I supposed to do, complain, phone the R S N P, maybe get Henderson on the line? What's that gonna do, what caused me more trouble? So I keep my mouth shut. Try to get along. But like I said, this complaint, they're not even trying to get along, I've never spoke, they've never...
We have had different things in the past where the neighbors actually, once a complaint came forth, they actually got talking and did resolve, but in this case, I think it's not a chance of that happening.
No, it's a non-dog owner that, like I said, they can't see what's going on, you know, behind my house and next door, so...
Right.
The, um, your time limit is upper, whatever, if you, do you have any other, anything else?
Well, is there a resolution to this, what am I supposed to do?
I, I was just going to say that I just wanna, you know, thank you, that's what a delegation is for, is to bring information to us or whatever, and then, then we'll certainly accept it and process it, and then, and then we'll make our necessary changes that we have to make going forward, but...
Okay.
Nope, thank you.
Thanks for, yeah, coming in.
Yep, thank you.
Number five, we'll skip that until our fire chiefs can make it from work, and then we'll move on to...
The in camera.
Yeah, okay, we'll go into in camera, five point two point one. Resolution one five two, be it resolved at pursuant to section one five two-three of Municipal Act, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding investigation or enforcement of an act of a bylaw pursuant to section eighty-three one D, council members shall keep in confidence of matter discussed at a meeting closed to the public under subsection one five two-three until the matter discussed at a meeting conducted in public pursuant to section ninety-four one H. A council member becomes disqualified for breach in the requirement of confidentiality under clause eighty-three one D, and the time being six fifteen.
Six sixteen, that clock's wrong.
It's wrong, what's the proper?
Six one six.
Six sixteen. Moved by Gary, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. Read resolution one five three to end in camera, be it resolved at pursuant to section one five two-four of Municipal Act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at...
Six four seven.
Six forty-seven. Moved by Gary, seconded by Ken, all in favor, carried. Five point two, I'm sorry, five point two point three, monthly bylaw enforcement service report.
So counsel, the report is fairly comprehensive of what's covered. Is there anything else that the animal control officer wishes to add to the report? Questions?
Okay, I'll read resolution one five four, be it resolved at the bylaw enforcement report, March two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented, moved by Ken, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. Hangin' Dale.
Thank you, Dale.
See you. Five point three, R C N P crime report. Any questions on the crime report?
Oh, R C N P crime report, a little bit of a change, this report relative to prior reports. In addition to the report for the municipality of Minnetonka, Bozeman, the R C N P is also offering us a monthly graphic report, pie charts, aligned graphs, and councils that attended the G H G four meeting will recall that this is a similar format as what was used for the two thousand twenty-four Swan Valley Region crime report. So this basically breaks down across the valley as a whole with different colors allocated to different municipalities.
And that's all posted online as well?
That's online as well, yeah, that's our standard report now. As long as they keep delivering them to us, then we'll keep posting, yeah.
Correct, the report, as of January first to March thirty-first, total calls of service were totaled seventy-eight.
This is all for Minnetonka, Bozeman, or is this for one D?
Uh, the first report is the one that has just the legal size, calls and numbers, that's just Minnetonka, Minnetonka, Bozeman, 'cause it goes into more detail. The other one is actually a derivative of the PowerPoint that slide deck that we prepared for the R C N P for their G A meeting, so what they've done is they're just, they're continuing that on a monthly basis now, so that's for the valley by, by municipality and by town. Yeah, so the, if you flip the page, the pie chart's behind, that's, that's for the whole valley, so our...
Seventy-eight calls was for three months. Is that correct, from the full report?
I would assume so, yeah, this is...
At the bottom, it gives the monthly totals.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But this is, the data on this is from the R C N P, all, all we did is just post. And the first report, we did change the formatting a little bit to be a little bit easier to read, but the content was not changed.
Any other questions on the report? Read the resolution one five five, be it resolved at the March two thousand twenty-five, municipality of Minnetonka, Bozeman, and Swan Valley Region R C N P crime statistics report be accepted as presented, mover and a second there. Clint, seconded by Gary, all in favor, carried. Moving on to five point four, citizen on patrol program report.
So this report came directly from the citizens, the citizens on patrol coordinator. One thing that I'll add to the report is the C O P P was recently approved for a two-thousand-dollar grant from the Swan Valley, uh, the Association for the Valley, it basically gives out for community organizations, and per our prior resolution, the municipality will then be making another grant application, or grant funding to supplement the C O P P for the purchase of equipment that they had applied for in the Swan Valley Region grant.
Any questions on the report? Hearing none, I'll read the resolution one five six, be it resolved at the citizens on patrol program activity report, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented, mover and a second there. Gary, seconded by. Ken, all in favor, carried. Five point five, emergency plan.
The emergency plan for two thousand twenty-five has been brought to council a few times, we've obtained a lot of feedback through investigative research by administrative staff, and then for those who watched the video or attended our last council meeting in which the emergency plan came up, there was quite a long dialogue as far as updates that individual councils were aware of, so there was very good collaboration as far as changes. So basically, part one, part two, there, those ones have been basically static, no changes there. Part three, what we've done is incorporated all the changes that came up in the last council meeting were incorporated, and how we did that is we basically replayed the video, we checked all of our notes, we checked the, the follow-up text messages regarding individual phone numbers and contact information, and basically walked into the video minute by minute, second by second, as that conversation went, we went that document and updated all the feedback that came from council. So this current version of the document now contains all of the results of the administration updates, investigation, and calling to update information, as well as all of council's feedback that we received for the last meeting in which this was brought forward. So now the final document is here for council review and approval decision.
Gail?
The very last page, which, um, the Pioneer Lodge is not owned by Manitoba Housing. It's owned by the First Baptist Church on the side.
Okay.
Oh, is it here? I can't see anybody behind the chair, so, is it you that they get a hold of for housing?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't, I can't see anyone.
So it's on the last page?
Very last page, yeah. Page one fifty-seven.
What row?
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, I got it, so it's not Manitoba housing?
It's not Manitoba housing.
And what is the full name of the organization?
Minnetonka First Baptist Church.
Okay, Minnetonka, okay.
First Baptist Church, Minnetonka.
First Baptist Church.
And then, yeah, then the phone number would be incorrect, too.
So since the First Baptist Church is attending, would council be okay if I inquire to request their phone number, or?
Yeah, sure.
The phone number of the church, sir?
Do you need the church or the lodge?
Uh, whatever number would be best if someone were to call in regards to the, in regards to that, that structure.
Then the lodge, two oh four, five two five, four three three nine.
Five two five, four?
Three three nine.
Three three nine, and...
It's forwarded to me.
Okay. So it's not Manitoba housing, and it was First Baptist Church of?
Minnetonka.
Of Minnetonka, thank you. So if council's okay, can we amend that to basically, let's go to the resolution, give you one moment?
I'll just change, I'll just change to amended.
Amended, would that be, would council be okay with that? Okay, I've got the change. If you just edit that and we're good, excellent.
Yep. Any other questions on the emergency plan? Everyone knows their roles and the responsibility of, in case of an emergency. And saying that, I'll read the resolution one five seven, be it resolved that a two thousand twenty-five emergency plan be accepted and approved as amended, mover and a second there. Gary, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. Number six, Public Works and Utilities Report.
So the Public Works and Utility Report is the monthly report that we, is submitted by the Public Works Department on the second meeting of each month. The report is relatively comprehensive regarding activity and following up on the open house sessions that we did during the two thousand twenty-five financial plan, town hall open house meetings. We have now included and are listing the dependencies, the Bozeman Water Utility Testing Report and the Minnetonka Water Utility Testing Report, which were taken on April tenth of this, of two thousand twenty-five.
Any questions, or anyone want to add to the report?
The water testing, that's all on the website now, you do that, people can view.
Yeah, so typical with our, we basically post the agendas one day prior to the meeting, which we did, and direct to the end of the report, there's two links to each of the reports, so the Bozeman Water Utility Report, the original report in its entirety is there, as well as the Minnetonka Water in its original and entirety form as well. As soon as their phone can access it now, if you wish.
Okay, no, I'll just check in. Uh, one thing, maybe I just would add, Paul, isn't he, how many sites did we have flood, minor flood damage to it? Forty, was it forty-two?
Yeah, somewhere's in there.
I think forty-two sites in the rural that need attention for the spring thaw, so that's something that he didn't have in there, that's fairly current, so...
Yeah.
Just to bring everybody up to date.
And there was no, no reports of any major colbers being taken or anything, just water over the road and...
Mainly gravel and some reclaiming out of the ditches and stuff like that, as far as I know, unless there was something in the north part of the municipality.
One complete washout of so, it washed the road right up.
Oh, it took the road, oh.
Yeah, they fixed it already.
Oh, excellent, okay.
Provincial?
Oh, not provincial, sorry, that was us.
Municipal.
Yeah, municipal.
And it's repaired, right?
It's repaired.
Oh, that's good, yeah. It's quick, it just happened on a Friday. It's quick, cause it just happened on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, day.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything extra regarding the report?
That water break trailer, was it metered or did we work?
Uh, it, it probably was metered. It probably was, yeah.
Was it for the consumption for water double?
Well, I, I'm not sure if the break was at the meter or, or before the meter. All we know is that it was, it was definitely in the trail, that's for sure, yeah.
I would assume it would have just been the meter reading at the, uh, at the well end that would indicate the, uh-
Well, not with the break.
I don't know, like depending, yeah, where it broke, if it broke just under before the meter.
We, we didn't-
That's what I was meaning.
Oh, yeah, I was wondering if that's, yeah.
So we, uh, when we do our water meter readings, we, part of the process, we always scan through them to see if there's any anomaly, like if you've got a, a $50,000 water bill, we'd say, well, it was misread, or maybe there's a broken meter. Uh, so nothing like that happened. Uh, but basically, they did, uh, once they fixed it, they did notice that the actual, uh, water utilization at the plant went down. So, but our meters were, were fine. Like as far, nothing came up, but any months reporting a, a high amount.
Ken, Gail, any questions on it? Good. For our resolution 158. Be it resolved that the Public Works and Utilities Report, April 17, 2025, be accepted as presented. Mover and the seconder. Gary and Clint, all in favor. Carried. Number seven, Monthly Public Works and Utilities Report.
We just, we just did just-
Oh, we just, I'm sorry, did that already.
Yeah. We're, we're into the finance.
Yeah, number eight, finance. 8.1.1, Payment of Accounts Payable. Any questions?
Did you want me just to comment on the checks, Larry?
Yep.
To rest, Larry and I did the financial review coming around and reviewed stuff. Uh, 13911 check, uh, for 1797. We're just gonna hang on to that because we, the invoice doesn't indicate clearly what that is payment for. So that check will be held. Um, oh, sorry, 13911. Yeah, for the amount of 1797. Excuse me. And then the second check is 13923, uh, for 181077. That one is also gonna be held, just, uh, referencing the 16343 fuel bill there.
Which check was that?
Uh, the last one on the page, 13923. Yeah. So that's another one we're gonna hold until we get clarification and get that sorted.
So, uh, per council guidance, it's, um, we'll keep it on as approved. We'll actually, the checks been signed. We'll hold the check and do an investigation, and then we'll take this as a takeaway for the next council meeting and bring it back to let, basically let you guys know what it is. And then, being that it'll be approved here, council can just say, go ahead and send the checks. Or they can say, no, now we want to re-sent our approval for that check, but we'll, we'll hold it for the next council meeting.
Any other questions on it? I'll read the resolution 159. Be it resolved that accounts payable checks 13887 to 13935 in the amount of 115,333.77 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and the seconder. Gary, seconded by. Ken, all in favor. Carried. 8.1.2, Payroll Payment for Pay Period, number seven. Anyone have any questions on that? Hearing none. I'll read the resolution 160. Be it resolved that the payroll pay period 07, 2025, for the period from March 15th to 28, 2025, in an amount of 25,515.52 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and the seconder. Ken, seconded by. Clint, all in favor. Carried. 8.2, Year-to-Date Statements of Financial Operations. Anyone have any questions on the report?
Well, not just the report, but just looking at the two utilities, do we know where the rate rider is for?
Uh, the rate rider, we're still in process on that.
Still in process, Trevor?
Yeah, still in process.
They just hit a no with me when I was looking at the two utilities, so I wanted to ask.
The reply that comes back, uh, so a little bit of history on this one. I believe it was back in 2022, uh, we basically made an application, uh, to the Public Utilities Board because we've got 14, 15 years now of deficits, and you're not supposed to have utilities and deficits. So basically, uh, the municipality back in 22 made a proposal as far as how to recover it. Uh, the Public Utility Board, uh, approved the proposals, one proposal for Minnetonka, and based on that approval issued a order, uh, basically saying, charge these rates. The problem is that, uh, back at that time, uh, 2022, the year of the fourth quarter, our water meters weren't working. So we were basically charging just the, the legal minimum on all of our accounts, but obviously people were consuming an awful lot more water. So that order, basically, it was there, but the point is, we weren't able to actually charge those rates because we only knew, we were only charging for the 13,000 gallons, whether you're using less or more, and a lot of organizations were using more. So at this stage, the rate rider may turn into, uh, basically a new order coming back, saying, now you're gonna charge these rates. So I'm not sure what the response coming back is, but it gets more complicated because of the fact that we applied, made a proposal, got our order, but because our meters weren't working from October, they started not working in October, uh, basically, and they weren't fixed until, um, I believe we started the work in January 2024, and it took us about four or five months to get them running. And then we were down for a month and back up for a month again because it was still learning curve. Um, we may very well have to go back and get another order. So whether it's gonna be straight rate rider or order in a rate rider, I don't know. And that's, that's basically where we are right now because the situation is not normal. Like it's basically, we had an order based on our, our application. We didn't comply with it because we, our technology was not being utilized to comply with it. And now we've gotta come back and say, this is what it is, and it's be more than telling us what to do versus us making proposal, but probably our application's gonna be based on their input into our application. So now that our budget process is done, uh, basically, our hearing is Tuesday next week for public hearing for the budget in Bozeman. Uh, basically, the rate rider will, will now be able to switch gears and that directly and more actively evolve. But we do have to place holders in our budget for that. And as long as the dollars, if they just move back and forth between expense line items or, or funding line items, that's okay. It just basically, um, as long as we stay within the parameter of what our budget is set up, we're fine. Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that report? Hearing none. I'll read the resolution 161. Be it resolved that the year-to-date statements of financial operations, general operation, January 1st to March 31st, 2025, be accepted as presented. Further be it resolved that the year-to-date statements of financial operations, Minnetonka Utilities, January 1st to March 31st, 2025, be accepted as presented. Further be it resolved that the year-to-date statements of financial operations, Bozeman Utilities, January 1st to March 31st, 2025, be accepted as presented. Mover and the seconder. Gail. Seconded by Gary, all in favor. Carried. 8.3, Tent Town Garden Club Grant.
So council members, uh, they probably recall, uh, Tent Town usually approaches, the club usually approaches council for, uh, funding on a annual basis. This is for the flower beds and planters in Minnetonka and Bozeman. I need to help them actually get the flowers and put them in and, uh, whatever supplies they need, fertilizer or whatever it might be to make it happen. Uh, they typically request it, historically have requested about $800 a year. That's what this request here is for. Um, in the past, we've also provided green team students, summer student, uh, labor to help with the weeding and water and stuff like that. Uh, we have a grant application for green team funding that's been submitted. We have one applicant for a green team employee that we've received. And, uh, in addition to this, we will be providing, um, per typical history, some green team students, summer student labor to assist as well. But this is just consistent with what we've done in previous years.
Any questions? I'll read resolution 162. Be it resolved that an $800 donation grant be made to the Tent Town Garden Club in support of his 2025 Minnetonka and Bozeman public flower garden and plant or growing season. Mover and the seconder. Clint, seconded by. Ken, all in favor. Carried. 8.4, Tax Title Property Sale.
This application, or sorry, this resolution is a follow-up to a prior meeting resolution where council approved, uh, the, initiating the process for taking properties that were in arrears, uh, up to and prior to, um, December 31st, 2023, so basically, December 31st, 2023, earlier. Uh, basically, beginning the, um, um, the province's process for basically collecting, uh, past due, uh, property tax. And basically, if it results to be required, uh, transition those properties from property ownership into, uh, tax title property owned by the municipality in case those property taxes are not actually paid. So this step here is basically a letter for council to approve the engagement letter by Tax Services, which we typically use historically, uh, to basically be the agent with which we actually have them do the process for us for the purposes of going through and doing this process. Uh, one thing just to add, uh, cause it's a question that kinda came up and a few people have asked, is that in this process, we could also have, uh, as we get to the process, and in a later council meeting, we could designate or basically appoint a designated bidder. Uh, what the advantage of having that is, if you have tax title properties, which we required by the Taxation Act to basically put up for auction, cause we need to have those properties up there because some may say, I owed, uh, 2,000 or, let's say, 5,000 property taxes, but my house was worth 20,000. We have to go through the auction process to find the market value and basically recover as much as we can, so we have to go through that process. But in that process, we could have a designated bidder whereby the municipality says, this agent of ours can actually bid on the property, uh, as per the guidance of council. And that just basically enables council to have some controls over who the actual final resultant, uh, successful owner or winner of the auction is. Uh, it doesn't mean we have to exercise it, but the legislation does allow us to have a designated bidder in that process. So that'll be, uh, we'll go further down that road once we actually approve the Tax Services Engagement Letter. So what I'm trying to say is, we're not just putting properties out where anybody can bid on and purchase it, uh, because that is the process, but we will have a bidder of our own in that process in case council has concerns as far as who ends up being the, the ultimate, uh, teacher owner of those properties. So it gives council a bit more control than just putting up as a, a flat-out, uh, open auction.
Gary?
So are we gonna use them just for the collection part only then? And if it ever did go to auction, we were gonna have the auction part ourselves?
So I did inquire with Tax Services and I also, uh, inquired with municipal relations, including at the AMM con, or AMM conference that we were just at. Uh, we have to have for properties that we're doing collections, i.e. in the situation, December 31st, 2023, and further back in time, we have to go through the auction process. So Tax Services would be there to manage the auction process.
Okay.
Uh, if a successful bidder is there, that is not the municipality, and that person wants to purchase the property and wins in that auction process, that property is now that individual's or that organization's property. Uh, for our process though, we have properties that are tax title properties already. Those ones, we could post up on our website and basically sell on our own, or we could, if council wishes, go through a Realtor. There's, it's total council's discretion what to do to those properties. And if you have a designated bidder in that auction that basically hypothetically purchases two, three properties, whatever it is, those would then come into our portfolio of tax title properties, which we can then put up on our website and sell. Council can directly sell that as well. So, long story short, uh, Tax Services will be contracted for the purposes of the auction process and sale, but, um, through the designated bidder process, council can just purchase a property on behalf of the municipality, bring it into our tax title portfolio, and then we can do whatever we, we want as far as our settlement. But per legislation, we have to go through the, the auction process.
Yeah, I was just reading paragraph four on page two. Based on our experience, we have devised and revised our auction sale conditions. Unless other, unless arranged otherwise, we will use our auction sale terms and conditions without a, without qualification. So I guess we could actually use the auctioneer of our choice if we wanted to.
Um, we could. So Tax Services, um, we can give them direction, but they're, I'm not so much worried about Tax Services doing the auction, I'm more worried about them following the legislation as far as moving into private ownership.
Good.
Yeah. And that's where their expertise is solid, like we can do it, yes, but the point is, is they've been doing it for many, many years, for many, many municipalities. I think we stick with them, also because of the fact that it guarantees objectivity, third-party objectivity. So we can say, it's kinda like when we, uh, had our senior elections officer. It's not an employee running the elections.
Right.
It's a senior election officer who's separate from the municipality running it. This is a similar approach.
No, I guess it was just that we always had a local auctioneer doing the, well, we would have a local auctioneer on standby hoping we never had to use them. Hopefully the people would keep their properties, but-
And, and that's true, like quite often people-
Rather than having somebody from wherever.
Exactly. And Tax Services can subcontract a local auctioneer if they so wish. And we can have those discussions with them as well, so it's not like we, they take over the process and we have no more control. They are collaborating with us in the process.
That's what I thought that paragraph kinda indicated, so.
Good, thanks.
Ken?
The only question I had was on, uh, the middle page, second last paragraph. It says this engagement is for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
Oh, then that's gotta be corrected. They probably pulled the letter out and, uh-
I think it's a file letter.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the original letter had 2024 on it, so I caught that error and said, please update. So how about we make a rep, uh, you said it was on the second page? Yeah.
This, this there.
Okay, so. Okay. Can be, if I go back to the resolution, similar to the last amendment. Give you one moment to pull up the resolution. So at this stage, um, you're just a point, you're- So at this stage, you're just appoint, you're basically approving the appointment, you're not specifically approving the engagement letter. So with this resolution, you give me the authority to actually finalize that engagement letter and take that edit back to them and say, make the update, then I'm sure we'll be fine. I am recommending a three-year term, just because of the fact that we don't want to go through the process every single year unless that's council's direction, but we can make that amendment. But with the resolution, you'd be basically enabling me to say, yes, let's go with this contractor.
Everyone good with that?
I just have a question about the process.
Say there was a property worth three thousand dollars and there was ten thousand dollars in taxes, and that property sold for twenty thousand dollars. Where does that extra money go? Or no, say the, say the selling price was way over the taxes, where does the extra money go?
So.
Back to the landowner.
Exactly.
Back to the owner.
So it covers the taxes first and then it covers the actual cost, cost of the actual taking title of the property as well as doing the sale, and then there's an administration fee of about fifty dollars. Basically, we cover all that, and then the surplus, we would just take it in our accounts, issue a check to the property owner, and that would be their money. Now, if you have a property, different lane, but still similar hypothesis is basically, if you had a hundred thousand dollar property and taxes owing of ten thousand, but the best price we could get is thirty thousand, the property's worth what the market values it at. So if you have a, hopefully you have enough attendees at the auction to actually bid to get the value, but that's, that's a risk that basically the owner takes when they're going through a tax sale property auction versus a realtor sales approach.
Good. That answers. Everyone's good, I'll read the resolution then. Resolution one six three. Be it resolved that municipality Minnetonah Bozeman appoint Tax Service Incorporated to manage property tax errors recovery for the municipality Minnetonah Bozeman. Be further resolved that municipality Minnetonah Bozeman appoint the following individuals as tax sale managers for the municipality Minnetonah Bozeman. Donna Zinkew, Vice President of Tax Service Incorporated, Tyler Burnside, Associate of Tax Service Incorporated. Move in the seconder. Gary, seconded by Clint, all in favor, carried. Eight point five, vacation leave implementation expense. Gary?
I'll have to table this one for tonight, Larry.
Everyone's good with that? Resolution one six four will be tabled. Moving on to eight point six, monthly finance report.
The monthly finance report is fairly comprehensive and follows the same general outline as it's followed in prior months. This is part of our regular monthly department reporting process. One addition that's not included in the report is that we have now confirmed M and P, which is Myers-Oris Penny LLP, which is our external auditors. They have confirmed the dates of the onsite audit for Tuesday and Wednesday, May thirteenth and fourteenth. So council, based on our previous discussion, just as a refresher, last year, we could not, because it was so far back in time and we were struggling with Scotiabank Mortgage Corporation, basically a large number of payments had come in, we couldn't find out who those payments were for as far as our, our tax property owners or utility account holders. It took several months for us to find out from them, basically who these transactions were for. We had seven that were persisting for quite a few months. We actually missed our audit window, had to wait three and a half months for Myers-Oris Penny to become available, again, to continue the audit. That wasn't their fault, that was just basically us having to investigation work that far back. The problem with the banks is that quite often you get information right away on their systems if it's within a six-month period, but when you go further back, they have to go through archives, which just takes longer, it's more difficult to get, and you can't just go to your local branch and make an inquiry, you've got to go through a central processing department, which typically only has an email address rather than a phone number where you can actually pick up the call. So with this one, we had TD Canada Trust, we had a hundred and forty-two to a hundred and forty-three transactions that we could not match to accounts, and this is because we were, bank reconciliations done January first through to June, so January first through to June, we got our reconciliations done at a timely matter. But in July, we were actually right in the period where basically we had no staff, and basically payments were coming in, and basically the staff we did have coming in, which was the first-invent assistant, then our manager of accounting, which came in October, we were just, money was coming in, we're putting money in the account, but basically the tracking to accounts was not happening, so we didn't have staff here qualified to do that kind of tracking work. So the quantity of unmatched or unreconciled payments was substantially larger than it was the prior year. So we started our inquiry for information shortly after we completed the two thousand twenty-two audit management statements. It took several months for us to get the information. Just an email, they say, please send a message, we'll get back to you within ten days. So two weeks later, we haven't heard anything, we do another email, and then basically wait for response, not hearing anything back, we do another email, or basically we need more time for this processing, and basically we're doing that. So what we basically did is we printed up all the information we had, we took it down to the TD Canada Trust branch, and as it works out, during one of the meetings, there was a branch manager, it was a branch manager's second day in the job, and definitely a champ there, someone who's really rising vacation, new in her role, that branch really worked hard with us to actually get the information. And Friday last week, all of the transactions came in, so we have a full disclosure of all of it, and we've been working flat out this week to basically do the reconciliation. We currently have five items that are still outstanding, and basically that's when I locked in this date for audit, because I didn't want to wait another two, three months in the future and then have to fall further behind. So this is a good update, just because we are now on track, we've been able to do page reconciliation challenge that happened because we had no staff here, we're through most of it, and get back that schedule.
Anyone any other questions on it? We'll read the resolution. Council's approval to change their resolution wording from presented to amended, seeing as we have that M and P information added on to it. Everyone's good with that? Resolution one six five, be it resolved that the finance report, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as amended. Move in the seconder. Ken, seconded by, all at the same time.
Yeah.
Gail, all in favor, carried. Number nine point one, Swan Valley Planning District Development Plan.
So this one is a carryover from prior meetings. I know there's been a lot of council deliberation and public engagement with council members on this, so I'm going to pass this, this resolution and recommend these attachments to council for, for discussion.
I had my first two, I guess three, because Larry and I had the same guy for our third person. I hadn't had anybody approach me until today, so I've got a couple guys I've talked to today, so at this point, I'm going to need some more time, I'm going to reach out to these guys and listen to their concerns and, and get back to them, because they actually were talking to me as I was on my meeting tonight, so in all fairness, I need more time to talk to them and go a little more in-depth with them.
Good.
Yeah, no, I agree. There's quite a bit of concerning things here for me, was taking almost three hundred acres of land, or acres of land, in Bozeman farmland and looking into primary community, and I think a hundred and fifty-some acres of Minnetonah is the same. I have concerns the way it is right now too, and I've had lots of people talk to me about it, so. And there's only in Minnetonah the changes that are all being prevalent here. It's concerning.
Gail?
I haven't heard from anybody about it, but I myself don't understand why they're taking it upon themselves to need to do this, so I wouldn't mind some clarification on why if it's not broke, don't fix it kind of thing.
I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-one years since the last plan was done or reviewed or whatever.
And it was.
Yeah. So I think the province and basically collaborating or communicating or consulting or working with Swan Valley Planning District, basically they do, they're supposed to be doing regular reviews to make sure that the zoning and the development plans match the current community needs, demands along those lines. I'm not sure what their timeframe for review is, but they started this process in February of last year, and at that time, they were saying it was twenty years since they last reviewed it, so now we're up to twenty-one. So at this stage, I think it's more provincial, saying we need to do a review as far as the requirements for council. Their request to us was basically to provide an approval decision and support for, but basically that's why we're here for resolution, because council, you're deciding whether you want to support this and approve this as it is, and basically that'll then become feedback for their second and third reading. So at this stage, there's, it's really your, your decision based on what you've heard of residents. I know the request was for additional information, so we bought Urban Systems in to explain more about what the plan involved, and they provided a good explanation, they provided additional maps, which made it more clear, which have been included as far as attachments to this agenda, but really it's, there's no right or wrong way here, it's based on what you believe as, as representatives of the community and what people are advising you, because you're their, their voice in this, this updating process.
The way I understand it, we need to review it, but there's really no pressure for us to change anything. If we're happy with the way it is, it can stay the way it is, we just have to review it. So I haven't had anybody come and approach me about it, nobody seems to really know too much, word is starting to get around now, but anybody I've approached and said, hey, here's what's happening, what do you think? I'm not finding anybody that likes to change. So that's where I'm at.
Are they unhappy with specific changes or it's in entirety?
Well, mostly the changes to the zoning. So nobody's that excited about getting all the changes made into primary community, and then I've touched base with a couple of my neighbors, we're not excited about making our area on the west side of town, so you can't have animals there.
So I listened to you there, Trevor, a minute ago, like if we don't approve this policy, then it would be the consulting firm on behalf of the province that would come back and, and gather more information as to why we're not happy with it and take another round at us? Is that what you're?
They didn't outline a process, it was basically Urban Systems, or sort of Urban Planning was basically hired as an external contractor. There that they, for those who recall, back in February and March of two thousand twenty-four, they did a bunch of advertising as well as a bunch of public sessions, council sessions to go through the whole plan and obtain input and feedback. So the directive in their letter was take this to a decision and then forward the resolution back. So what we could do is, if it's a no, we say it's not approved, these are our concerns, the concerns will be listed, basically, I wouldn't recommend it being in the resolution, I suggest it being a letter to a company. If it's approved, then that's great, but basically the next steps, I'm not aware what the next steps are, because I think, I believe the, the first reading for the province has already been done, is my understanding, it was done back in late February or early March, and at this stage, their request is basically for feedback on the plan. So what their next steps would be, I'm not sure.
Okay. Was the first reading done by the planning district or not the province?
I think it was passed by us before we were on council.
It's not crossed once, passed at the planning district?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From what I understand, some of these comments are actually coming from the government, I'm assuming.
Yep.
Like, they're actually questioning, why are we taking farmland and trying to want to put into primary community? That's their questions, like why? A lot of these questions that are in yellow are actually coming, we're being questioned. I think we got to just tell them what we want, like, we're just waiting for an answer to see what we want, and, and there it goes. One thing I do agree with, like, and this is the government here asking, does the board support allowing new life, no, that's new lives. Someone here was talking about existing livestock operations.
Increasing the animal units.
Yeah, to the three hundred head, which is, I, I'm totally for our existing livestock.
Operations to grow that up to that.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
So we do agree on, on some of the recommendations that they do suggest, but then there's others that we have questions on or totally disagree.
That makes, that makes it more sense, I'm talking it out. I'll talk to these two or three individuals and I'll itemize what their concerns are, and then I can come back and say, three people, maybe even five by the time, matter, whatever, these are the concerns, and we can do our vote, and then we have that information to get back to the consulting firm with our recommendations and to, does that sound fair?
Yeah.
And if we do have more questions ourselves or whatever, we can just go back to that company that did this report?
Absolutely, if it's more, I think the Urban Systems is basically, they can answer questions regarding the plan and how it was developed. For questions more intent or maybe beyond the scope of the plan, I think those questions might be better off going to the planning district. Because like the contractor's scope versus the, the organization that, well, it was the province that hired it, but basically for questions beyond the contractor's scope, we would go to the next organization.
Okay. Everyone good with those suggestions?
Yep.
We're fine, okay.
We'll just table this.
Yeah, table, yeah.
Yeah, there's no resolution on it. Ken usually gets off work at seven thirty or whatever, our fire chief.
He should be off at seven, I think.
Okay.
I'm sure he's not coming. How many dextons?
Yeah, possibly, either, either that, we can go back to do the fire protection, but if he's signing on attending, then we'll wait. That's, I'll go to nine point two, variation order application.
So for the resolution and the application, council's reached with the application for a variation order. The process for variances is to go through a public hearing process. The legislation, as well as the, the guide for doing variance process, is clear as far as the deadlines and timelines and notification. This is the same process that we utilized when the Sunflower daycare was basically had their variance order or variance application. So what we have here is a resolution to have a public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, May thirteenth of this year.
Do we have a time?
At this stage.
To be determined, yeah.
Six P M. The resolution says six P M, and that. And that'll be here in Minnetonka's municipal office chambers.
May thirteenth?
Uh, May thirteenth, Tuesday, May thirteenth, six P M in council chambers. And that allows enough time to get the advertisement out. Yep.
Nine point three, monthly administration report.
We still have to get the resolution passed. Uprooted.
For the variation order?
Exactly, to establish the date and then it'll enable the board revision, which is basically council.
I need the resolution.
Do you not have any other?
No.
Should be there, but I can reprint it. Give me one moment.
One sixty-seven, twenty twenty-five, right?
No, I am.
Oh, you don't have it?
I don't have it here. And I don't have anything after one six five.
One six five.
Where's my last one?
Sorry?
We're getting the resolutions drawn up. I guess we can dip into the announcements if there's any.
I had a quiet span between meetings. I don't have anything this time, which is kind of nice.
Okay. Gail?
Um, there was a board meeting. I was away for medical, so I couldn't attend. I haven't gotten any. I don't have anything on yet, which is very important.
Ken?
We were at the A M M. Couple notes here, because I knew you were gonna ask me. Uh, I went to the Water Service Board breakout session and I mentioned Trevor to check with them about possibly getting a loan when it comes time to pay for the Bozeman Lagoon. They just kind of mentioned it almost in passing, and I'm kind of deaf, but I thought he said that that was a service that they offer. I also went to a breakout session on chair proofing your R M. And he said that they have a company that refurbishes heavy equipment back to brand new specs, including full manufacturer warranty. So I was aware that they do that on stuff like fire trucks. To me, heavy duty equipment is like graders and loaders. So whether it's actually true or what that would look like, you gotta send your grader away for five years before you get it back, or whether you ship it out like a core and you get a different one back.
Oh, that works.
Right away, I have no idea. Tried talking to the guy, but he wants everything to go through his company. He wouldn't tell me who was doing it. But so the name of the company is Canoe Canada. So if we had to, we could go through them, but surely if somebody's doing it, we could find it on Google somewhere. So that might be an option for us. And just got a pat on the back for our healthcare recruitment team. I went to their breakout session and it sounded to me like they pretty much modeled the provincial one around what we're doing here in the valley. One thing I wasn't sure about that we do here in the valley, he said that when you're trying to attract new doctors, you should line up all kinds of experts. The new doctors don't care. They want to talk to the doctors. So if we're not already doing that, that's something we could, we could do. He said that was their number one way of recruiting new doctors, was let them talk to the doctors that are there, because they can answer all the questions that a doctor has. So that was pretty much the highlights of what I picked up.
And similar opening, or opening remarks or when the A M M started or whatever, the Honorable Glenn Simard, Minister of Municipal and Northern Relations, he had a couple of announcements to make, and that was thirty-six point four million dollar project for Churchill upgrade. And then also he had mentioned Bill thirty-eight and regarding to snowplows, snowplows on like on roads and highways or whatever, new regulations coming, coming in those regards with some of the accidents that's been happening. People falling too quickly to the snowplow and whatnot else. And I attended, where did I go? We were everywhere.
You went somewhere else, yeah.
Yeah, there was a few other sessions that we went through, and I'm just trying to think of the last one that I went to. It was called a conflict.
Oh, council.
It was a good seminar, though, it sounds like.
Yeah, it was good. There was well over six hundred attendees to it and whatnot, and a lot of information was gained. They had a very good trade show, where I'm not quite sure in what they had for booths. There must have been sixty or seventy booths possibly. And there was a large inventory of.
Equipment and stuff?
Of equipment, heavy equipment, ranging right from lawn mowers to graders and, and rubber tire hoes and skate steers and whatnot. And then to that, what was that? Where we got our colibariums from?
Old Nelson Granite?
Yeah. I spoke with him briefly or whatever and brought a brochure back so that Paige could have it up, up front or whatever, the booklets.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Makes it easier to find stuff. Yeah, there was times that the room was full and it was very, temperature was very hot in there. So when you, when you get that combination, it's sometimes very hard to keep your eyes focused in a way. But all in all, it was, it was, the fall one will be in Brandon this year, so.
Oh, I thought they're having more than a few now, no? Or it's not in cycle yet?
It's not in cycle, because they've already contracted hotels.
They've committed to the, yes.
But our resolution that we brought forward with the support of the other municipalities and I believe the Swan River, the Brandon one will be in the spring in two thousand and twenty-seven. And then it'll be spring Brandon and Winnipeg for the fall on a go-forward basis.
Right, then it'll be in sync.
Yeah, and it'll just keep going there. But they couldn't do it earlier because they'd already contracted with the hotel. They'd have to break the contract, so.
That's understandable.
So just to add to the A M M, I attended the M M A, basically, which is the municipal, Natuville Municipal Administrators, basically CEOs and administrative staff in the municipalities. They basically have stats that say within five years, one-third of CEOs and to a lesser extent administrators will be retiring or moving on based on what their surveys are saying, because they've done survey work on that. And in ten years, it'll be about sixty-five to sixty percent turnover. So what they're trying to do is basically develop mentorship programs, well, enhance their mentorship programs as well as their course offerings for the development of CEOs and administrative staffs. They've got a tier one, which is basically administrative staff, and a tier two, which is professional administrator. And they talked about how their, other professional groups can transition in based on what their current designations are versus the actual, they're trying to set up a new designation as far as chief administrative officer. So the discussion went on that in some communities, they have engineers that are CEOs, some of them have masters in business administration, some of them have masters in public administration, and of course, they're CPAs. The actual speaker was a CPA as well. Basically, what they're doing is they'll be looking at these different professional groups and saying, well, based on your professional strengths, core competencies, because they're collaborating with the actual professional associations in these areas, that basically they'll say, okay, to get the equivalent here, you have to pick up one or two courses or three or four courses, whatever it must be. And for example, in the CPA designation, there is a course on municipality law, which basically they have recommended, that's one they've identified so far. And with the other ones, we don't know yet, but basically they're working on that as far as they go forward. And we'll probably see that within the next two, maybe three years, but it's basically a project they've been working on to do that. Because there's a lot of people who are in CEO positions right now that are not taking the University of Manitoba course. They've got professional designations for other areas. So basically, they want to make it, but they've got a designation, but they're not gonna send these other professional association members to three, four years of education. They're gonna basically provide supplement trade classes so they can transition and then hold two designations rather than just the one. The other one I attended was with the Manitoba Ombudsman. Basically, they were talking about Freedom of Information applications, processes, complaints with the Manitoba Ombudsman. Basically, we did a, a tabletop exercise just with partners, which was very similar to some of the applications and the Manitoba work we've been doing as well. And the interesting thing is a lot of municipalities in the province of Manitoba are struggling with a similar issues that we're struggling here as far as freedom of information applications, which is not a problem, but just the volume, complaints, social media engagement, social media criticism, public engagement and criticism, some positive, but also some negative. So basically, it's a lot of municipalities facing the same challenges and basically looking for guidance. The Ombudsman has basically made some recommendations. We are fairly consistent. Basically, we've got a lot of it already in place, but basically the collaboration with the Ombudsman and with Freedom of Information applications, we are, we are following the legislation, which is per the recommendation. And basically, they, they are saying we are, we can engage with them on a collaborative basis. The positive part of that is that it's not adversarial. It's basically cooperative, consultative, which is basically where the municipality and the actual complainants or concerned citizens are working together to find a resolution. And the Ombudsman basically guides that process as far as providing guidance of what is, what isn't, should be provided. And then basically the municipality adjusting. Also, we've had some complaints, but they've just been dismissed because the complaint has been invalid. And the ruling back is basically this complaint, there's no evidence to support it. So basically, they're being dismissed as well. So that was a lot of discussion in the tabletop exercise in that regard. It was actually a very positive, and it's like, okay, we're on the right track, let's keep going. So that's basically what we're doing. But the thing is, is a lot of municipalities are facing the same challenges.
Ken's not coming, can't make it.
Pardon me? Oh, Ken, Ken.
Ken's not coming, can't make it.
Okay, thanks, Ken. And also with the A M M, Minister, Justice Minister, we've also announced coming changes to the bail reform. There's also more money was announced for hiring and more R C and P members. And there was also some programs that were coming out for the repeat offenders and in regards to whether wearing ankle bracelets or whatever for the, to follow them and stuff like that. And also, I just remembered the last session that I went to and it, and it was with the heritage. And the presenter was a retired professor. And what his job was is to document and put everything on the website, such as churches, cemeteries, old buildings and whatnot. So if there's anything in municipality Minnetonka's Bozeman that wished to have it documented on, on their website as far as.
Okay, like an older heritage building?
Heritage sites and whatnot, and just to have it yourself on the map. And we could, we could certainly do that for the municipality, just a matter of getting hold of them going forward. But he spends a lot of his time, excuse me, is driving out through all of Manitoba everywhere and then, and then finding points of interest or whatever and marking them down and putting them on the website. So it was very interesting.
Sounds good.
Also, one thing, too, is the provincial government, I believe they've done one reading for sure, possibly two, new legislation regarding properties that are being used for drug purposes, production or trafficking. And at this stage, it is only one or two readings in, but the idea is that if there's proof or evidence of drug trafficking, drug trafficking or production in the actual facility, it would go to a five-day eviction notice and basically enable some bypassing of some of the challenges that landlords have or companies have as far as dealing with properties like that. Other than just that general description of the change, there was no further detail. But basically, if it goes through third reading approval, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes up through that process.
So it's fast-tracked now for the eviction, or is it, Trevor? Or that's not, it's not yet?
I don't think it's been past tracked, but they've done one reading and possibly two, I couldn't recall, because there's a lot of material going through. But I like the idea of if it's passed in its current form or as it currently communicated, if there's proof of it, what is proof, who gets the proof and confirms the proof to be determined. But basically, if this is a drug trafficking or a drug production or other major crime kind of building, it would enable landlords for sure, but maybe other parties as well, maybe with the involvement of the police to be, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But basically, you could go through a five-day eviction process where basically, okay, here's your five-day notice, start back.
Engage quicker than, than out of there.
Yeah, exactly, versus potentially months going through other eviction processes.
The municipalities.
Yeah, let us do it, yeah.
Well, I just thought of one thing for the audience, public hearing Tuesday Bozeman at six for the budget, just so everybody is aware of that.
Correction, seven o'clock for the budget.
Or seven o'clock, thank you, Trevor, yeah. Seven o'clock, Bozeman, October twenty-second, Tuesday.
And per the legislation, budget packages have been available for quite a while at the front. I don't think we've, I haven't checked this week, because I was away, but as of Friday last week, they're still all there. And we're also bringing them out to Bozeman as well for Wednesday's when we're open. So if anybody wants to pick up a package, it's available publicly. If you're going to Bozeman and picking up, if anybody wants, because last time for whenever open houses, somebody requested six. If someone needs more than five, because that's all I've got there, let me know and I'll print up more so I can bring them with me for pickup there.
Perfect.
Okay. We'll get back to our resolution, resolution one six six. Resolution, we'd resolve the municipal Minnetonka's Bozeman approved the draft Swan Valley development plan, and that'll be tabled.
Is tabled, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you record the vote for the variation order application?
I haven't done that yet, no. Resolution one six seven, we'd resolve that the council municipality of Minnetonka's Bozeman accept a variation order application for the property located as part southwest quarter of twenty thirty-eight twenty-sixth, west of the prime meridian, and schedule a public hearing for this application to be held at six P M on Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, in the Minnetonka's Municipal Office Council Chambers. I need the mover and the seconded for that resolution, Gary, seconded by Clint, call the favor, carried. I'll jump back now and do the Fire Protection Services report, yeah. He won't be able to make the meeting, so if you want, I can, it's not a very long report to, someone want to read it out, or I can do it?
I can do it, Larry.
You want to do it, Gary? Go ahead.
Sure. Okay, Fire Protection Report, April seventeenth to twenty-five. Emergency calls on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, municipality of Minnetonka's Bozeman Fire Department received a report for residential fire alarm shortly after deployment. Fire department members stood down as the key holder reported that it was a false alarm. Training category, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, fire department members held a ladder training session, which included practical ladder usage scenarios. Training was also held on the new hose washer, which involved going through the process of washing the hose line. On March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, members from the Bozeman and Minnetonka's fire halls toured the Louisiana Pacific manufacturing facility. The tour included areas of the plant with a higher risk of fire and areas where previous, previous fires have occurred. For some fire department members, this was their first time at the manufacturing facility, and they were amazed as to the size of the facility and its equipment. The fire department strives to do this tour annually. A special thank you to La Sager, LP's environmental health and safety manager, for this learning opportunity. Under recruitment, the fire department continues to, new member recruitment with a focus on recruitment for the Bozeman Fire Hall. And I think we have eighteen members between the two halls, if I recall correctly.
If I recall correctly, you're right, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on the report? Hearing done, I'll read the resolution. Thanks, Gary. Resolution one five one, be resolved that the fire protective services report, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, be accepted as presented. Mover and a seconder, Kent, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. And we'll move on to nine point three, monthly administration report.
The monthly administration report follows the same format as been used in previous month. This is the administrative department's, uh, regular reporting per every third Tuesday of the month on a regular basis. The report is comprehensive as far as our activities to date, but there is one update. During our paper records review, we're basically, we're going through all of our archives, which is basically our vault room, this back room, as well as other storage areas. This one we've been working on for quite a while. Basically, um, this review is being done in compliance with our file retention, the government's file retention guidelines. So, basically, files that are to be destroyed, per the guidelines, are basically documented and destroyed. And files that are to be archived are basically packaged up to be going to Manitoba archives. And files retained are basically not just repainted now in paper, they're actually scanned to PDF documents and stored on our O drive as well. So, we have electronic as well as paper. But during the review, uh, we actually found four large bylaw binders just tucked in a shelf, um, been there for quite a while, based on the color of the paper, the Asian paper. Some of this paper is going back to the onion skin, for those who use typewriters back in the day, so it's quite old. And what we found is basically, uh, the previous already read bylaw for the repeals bylaw in a previous council meeting, where we identified seventy-six bylaws that had to be repealed, going back to nineteen eighty-seven. We have now identified two hundred and fifty more bylaws that basically need to repeal, and they go back to, um, they range from two thousand and six to nineteen forty-nine. And what these bylaws are is basically, rather than utilizing resolutions for council decisions, they were basically utilizing bylaws for council decisions. So, these bylaws are either for projects that have now completed, timeframes that have now passed, appointments where employees' names have actually been said, this employee shall do this, this employee shall do that, going back decades and decades, these employees have long gone. And basically, these bylaws, uh, need to be repealed, because a lot of them should have been done through resolution, rather than writing a new bylaw each and every year, where you're, you got one bylaw, and you got two bylaws, and you got three bylaws, and it just grows and grows. Basically, uh, these bylaws, one bylaw is, should be replaced by the next year's bylaw, replaced by the next year's bylaw. And basically, at this stage, uh, what we have now is a lot of bylaws need to be repealed. And, um, this resolution will then add for our second reading, where we have our appeals bylaw, will be increasing the current seventy-six bylaws that are, uh, basically recommended for repeal. Council has been given copies of those. We will be adding another two hundred and fifty bylaws for repeal, expanding those as far as documenting in the information item, or sorry, the approval item for council review, and then expand them into the bylaw itself as well. So, that project is going, uh, we're pushing through it. A great thank you to Sherry Toll, who was our municipal clerk. That has been her primary project that she's been working on since she started. And we thought we were done, until one project nearing completion, we found more to put for another. So, we took two steps forward, one step back, but basically, we're overall, that's still progressing forward, uh, in this project as well.
When you get them in small most, not two hundred and fifty, I'd have to... I read the last one, that must be the wall.
Well, the one's dating back to nineteen, what's the earliest one?
Nineteen forty-nine.
Nineteen forty-nine, actually, kind of interesting when you...
Yeah.
They would be.
So, they were, one of them was talking about the, when we got, uh, the Bozeman, uh, this is, I've just heard about this in general. When they got the water utility set up, where you actually had the sewage supply screen and flushing toilets, they had a bylaw about the burning of the outhouses. So, that's in there, it's an interesting read. So, uh, but there's history there, too. So, um, basically, we'll look at, save a couple of those, just because it's, it's good history. And those, uh, outhouse burning were actually on our, um, is one of our, some of our literature we had, it was actually there as well. We've talked about that as well, which was interesting. I've never seen a document of a municipal government where basically you see an outhouse that's on fire. And so, it was just, uh, a bit of a unique, it was definitely very odd.
Any questions for Trevor regarding his report?
No, not for me.
Kent, I'll read Resolution one six eight. Be resolved that administration report, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, be accepted as presented, mover and a seconder. Gary, seconded by Clint, all in favor, carried. What do you, what do you want to do with, with this one here, the pilot project?
So, that's a camera.
Oh.
That whole clip portion is for a camera, yeah.
Okay. And I believe we've gone through everything, so that leaves us with, uh, number twelve, of moving into camera again. And once we move into camera and come out of camera, there's, then we'll be adjourned. Resolution one six nine, be resolved pursuant to section one five two-three of Municipal Act, despite subsection one and two, councils shall meet as a committee as a whole to close a meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee, land, legal, and matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public would prejudice the municipal Minnetonah's Bozeman's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. Pursuant to section eighty-three, one D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting close to the public under subsection one five two-three, until the matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section ninety-four, one H, a council member becomes disqualified for breach of the requirement of confidentiality under clauses eighty-three, one D. And the time being, seven, eight?
Seven.
Eight oh seven? I need a mover and a seconder to go into camera. Gary, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried. Resolution one seven zero, be resolved pursuant to section one five two-four of Municipal Act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at...
Eight, eight fifty-nine.
Eight fifty-nine, mover and a seconder, Gary, seconded by Clint, all in favor, carried. Resolution one seven one, be resolved that this regular meeting of council be adjourned at eight...
Nine o'clock now.
I'm sorry, nine o'clock, where am I going here? Moved by Gail, seconded by Kent, all in favor, carried. Meeting adjourned.